Good afternoon. I'd like to call this public session of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. As you all know, in the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy, the past few weeks have been particularly challenging for many members of the university community, as well as more broadly, our city, state, and region. The chancellor will be reporting during his discussion on the impact of Hurricane Sandy on our various colleges, students, faculty, and staff. I do wish, however, to make special note of the fact that four CUNY students perished as a direct result of the storm. Jacob Vogelmann, a 23-year-old student enrolled in Brooklyn College's Department of Theater; Jesse Streichkast, a 24-year-old friend of Jacob Vogelmann and an education student at Hunter College; Lauren Abraham, who attended Lehman College and transferred to LaGuardia Community College; and John Filippowicz, a 20-year-old student at the College of Staten Island who died together with his father in the basement of their home as the storm crumpled it on top of them. I think it's appropriate that we begin this meeting with a moment of silence in memory of all those members of the CUNY community who perished because of this storm, as well as our fellow New Yorkers and those in our region who fell victim to the storms and who lost homes and property. If we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We will be going into executive session at the conclusion of the public meeting. We do not anticipate reconvening in public session after the executive session. I would like to read the following notice into the record. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public are invited to speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry? As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public session of this afternoon's meeting of the Board live on Cable Channel 75. The meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. On behalf of the Board and Chancellor Goldstein, I would like to congratulate USS Chairperson and Student Trustee Kafue Kuakua on his reelection on October 14th. Welcome back. We look forward to continuing. The chancellor and I have scheduled a dinner for members of the Board with the newly-elected CUNY student leaders on Monday, December 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. that will take place here in this room. I hope to see a good showing from members of the Board at that meeting with students. I reported at our September meeting that trustee Kathleen Pacilli would be receiving the Association of Community College Trustees 2010-2012 Regional Award on October 12th. Trustees around the table have a copy of the award event booklet, and the pertinent pages commemorating this award are marked for you. Congratulations, trustee Pacilli. I would also like to thank trustees Frida Foster and Kathleen Pacilli for their presentations at the well-attended 8th Annual CUNY Women's Leadership Conference on October 26th at Hunter College. Under the leadership of the Council of Presidents Women's Leadership Initiative Committee and cosponsored by the New York Times in college and the New York City Commission on Women's Issues, the conference focused on career choices and challenges opportunities for leadership. Let me extend our congratulations to Dean Michelle Anderson and to the faculty and students of the CUNY Law School for achieving an 83.5 percent pass rate on this year's bar exams. I'm very pleased to announce that Assistant Professor Reece Shad of the Department of Humanities at Hostos Community College was selected the 2012 New York State Professor of the Year from among a group of nearly 300 educators in the U.S. by the Carnegie Foundation for the Advancement of Teaching and the Council for the Advancement and Support of Education. Professor Shad is with us today. Professor Matos Rodriguez, could you please introduce Professor Shad?
I'll be honored to, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. As you mentioned, Professor Reece Shad is the director of our Media Design Program where he teaches courses in graphic design, animation, music production, audio engineering, and game design. We're lucky enough that he had a previous career as a musician. He had his own band. He had 11 records to his credit. He was even nominated for a Grammy. I guess he wasn't happy that he didn't get the Grammy, and he decided to seek an alternate career, and he went to pursue his studies at RPI and at Parsons in Design and Technology, and then came to Hostos to begin our program in media design. We're very proud of Professor Shad. He just was awarded a grant by the National Science Foundation to work on a project called "Designing the Future for Games," Games for Multimedia. It's a way to rethink our remedial math courses around gaming, and we're very excited about a project that will have an impact at Hostos but also intends to work with the New York City Public Schools once they get a sense of the results of the methodology. He's a published author. He didn't like the book that was being used for the game animation class, so he went and he wrote his own book along with the students. It's called Einstein and the Honeybee: An Introduction to Game Design and Game Development. It's available in Amazon. And I want you to know that the proceeds from the book go to a fellowship named after his brother that funds scholarships for the students at Hostos that are members of that program. So, you know, Professor Shad is the real deal. We're really honored that this award was bestowed upon him. And before I let him say a few things, I'm just going to read two lines from his teaching philosophy, which I think say a number of things about him. He calls himself an artistic scientist, and he says, "In my studies, I have found that the most creative minds of history push the boundaries of a given field by drawing from other disciplines, and that the most successful students of the world must follow suit. As our world grows even smaller with the growth of its population and the increasingly sophisticated intercommunication of that population, the ability to recognize and draw from such connections grows even more crucial. It is my goal to help foster the artistic scientists in each of my students." It's my pleasure to introduce Professor Reece Shad.
Thank you very much for inviting me here tonight. I have this issue that floats around behind me all the time, this Grammy thing. I'm a singer-songwriter, but I also ran a record company for 20 years. And as the guy who produced the records at that company, one of our records was nominated. It was not mine. So, please, do not go and check the record and then go, "Hey, he's lying about that nomination." All right? I actually can give you an MLA-formatted citation to this if you wish. The students at Hostos are a miracle for me. If you had told me when I was running a record company 20 years ago that I would be coming back to New York, from upstate New York, and getting to work in the South Bronx with talented young men and women and bringing them to see that their artistic inclination can end up in a career, I would have completely, you know, walked away. There is no way I was going to be able to do something like that. This is a constant blessing every day that I breathe, I enjoy, and I thank you all for
I would like to report that the Board held its budget and public hearing on Monday, November 19th, 2012. Trustee Valerie Beal chaired the hearing, which was also attended by trustees Rita DiMartino, Kafue Kuakua, and Terrence Martell, as well as members of the Chancellery. A summary of the proceedings has been circulated to the trustees and the chancellor's cabinet, and a transcript is available in the office of the secretary. I want to extend our condolences to the family of Barry Commoner, who passed away on September 30th. Dr. Commoner pioneered the environmental movement in the United States. He founded the Citizens Party, ran for President of the United States in the 1980 election. After his presidential bid, Dr. Commoner moved his Center for the Biology of Natural Systems to Queens College and stepped down from his post there in 2000. At the time of his death, Dr. Commoner was a senior scientist at Queens College. Our condolences also go to the family of Louis J. Bodai, former York College Provost and Vice President of Academic Affairs. A professor of chemistry, he joined the college in September 1967 and worked tirelessly with the late York College President Milton Bassin until his retirement in September 1991. He died tragically on November 4th in a fire at his home. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Queens College was named one of the top 10 public regional universities in the North in the 2013 edition of the U.S. News &amp; World Report Best Colleges. Congratulations. CUNY School of Law was named second in the nation on the Diversity Honor Roll for most diverse law schools by the National Jurists. It also ranked the law school among the top 25 in the nation for best law libraries. Congratulations. Baruch College ranked on the top 25 undergraduate programs for entrepreneurship. Listing of the Princeton Review and Entrepreneur Magazine were the fifth straight year. Baruch College of Public Affairs Professor John Goring and Shoshana Schaefer were inducted as Fellows of the National Academy of Public Administration. Congratulations. John Jay College of Criminal Justice was awarded a $250,000 contract from the City Council for the Gun Violence Evaluation Assessment Work in New York City for one year. Kingsborough Community College Professor and Chairperson of the Department of Biological Science, Dr. Loretta Brancaccio-Tarris, was named a Vision and Change Leadership Fellow by the Partnership for Undergraduate Life Sciences Education Program, a joint initiative of the National Science Foundation, Howard Hughes Medical Institute, and the National Institutes of Health. Hunter College Distinguished Professor of English, Dr. Elizabeth Nunez, received a Lifetime Literary Award from the National Library Information System Authority. Hunter MFA in Creative Writing Program Executive Director Peter Carey was named an Officer of the Order of Australia by Queen Elizabeth II. And Hunter Associate Professor of Psychology, Roseanne Flores, was appointed as the Representative of the UN of the American Psychological Association for a four-year term. Congratulations to all. The City College Bernard and Anne Spitzer School of Architecture Dean George Rinaldi was the architect designer of the Saratoga Avenue Community Center, which just received a Stanford White Annual Design Award for Excellence in Classical and Traditional Design from the Institute of Classical Architect and Art. Congratulations to all the recipients. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Macaulay Honors College at John Jay College Senior and CUNY BA Program student Nico Montano, who is majoring in the Psychology of Juvenile Delinquency and International Criminology, is one of 40 students selected nationwide for the Marshall Scholarship Program. Congratulations. Hunter College was recognized as a top producer of students for the U.S. Fulbright Program with six student grants received, one of which was submitted through the CUNY BA Program. Other CUNY colleges recognized were Baruch College and John Jay College of Criminal Justice with two grants each, and Queensborough Community College with one grant. Congratulations. A seven-student team from the College of Staten Island garnered second-place honors in the Little Fay Track of the Supercomputing Competition SC-12 IN in Salt Lake City, where they competed with teams of students from around the world. My special congratulations to the College of Staten Island. Bernard and Anne Spitzer School of Architecture at City College undergraduate Jamie Edniglian received the Highly Competitive Society of American Registered Architects New York Council's Shawn Mellon Memorial Architectural Student Scholarship. Congratulations. Eleven Medgar Evers College students presented research posters at the University of Maryland's 15th Annual Undergraduate Symposium. Congratulations. Hunter College Double Hunter Maide alumna of 1951, Dr. Mildred S. Dresselhaus, a prize-winning scientist, won the 2012 Cavley Prize. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have at the table a list of the grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to our September 24th, 2012, meeting. May I now call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start my report talking about the events around Hurricane Sandy. But before I do, I think we all in this room need a collective shout of praise for our own trustee Joe Loda for the extraordinary work he did. Joe, it's just amazing that you and your team, in the short period of time that you did, were able to get this city moving again, and we're certainly grateful for your work. The university community, like so many New Yorkers and so many in our region, experienced much distress and difficulties as a result of the hurricane and its aftermath. Nevertheless, the crisis was managed within the framework of an integrated university approach, where our campuses assisted each other and the city of New York with both guidance and appreciation from the central office. I did have, as I reported to our Council of Presidents a couple of weeks ago, had an opportunity to work with FEMA in the Rockaways, starting at Breezy Point, working through Napanzit, Bellhopper, Rockaway, and further down into Far Rockaway. I did stop at trustee Judah Gribitz's house, and remarkably, his house was untouched. Both houses on both sides of you, if I remember, Judah, were damaged. I have never seen such devastation for the time that I have lived, certainly in New York. The despairing looks on behalf of the people in these communities frightened and dazed by not having heat and electricity was really quite, quite moving for me. Seeing houses devastated, destroyed, people losing automobiles, deaths in the community, it was a profound experience to me. And as we speak, there are still many, many people in this community that are still suffering. But let me talk to you about the university and give you an update on what happened and where we are today. The university suffered significant water damage at three of our campuses: Kingsborough Community College, BMCC, and Hunter's, Hunter College's Brookdale campus. There was no power at five campuses and the Hudson Street University Office's location for extended periods of time, and the class schedules of students and faculty were disrupted for as many as nine days. All of the campuses have adjusted academic calendars in order to make up for the lost classes. Ten CUNY campuses served as temporary shelters throughout the crisis, serving thousands of New Yorkers and invariably over one-third of all city residents in temporary housing. This was at Baruch, Bronx Community College, CCNY, Hunter, John Jay, Lehman, New York City College of Technology, Queens College, Queensborough Community College, and York College. Many students, faculty, and staff were personally impacted by the storm. Close to 8,000 CUNY students had or had have or had had homes in evacuation Zone A, and tens of thousands more have homes in other low-lying areas. I wish to commend Kafue Kuakua and his USS colleagues on the resolution they passed, Kafue, which asked that we finish the semester with integrity while providing negatively impacted students with reasonable flexibility to finish this semester's work. I communicated back to you, Kafue, saying that I agree with the resolution, and I have communicated to all of the presidents the nature of the resolution, and actually, I included the resolution as well. And we'll be talking with the presidents to ensure that the values that you bring to that resolution will be enforced here at the university. So, thank you for taking the time and reaching out to us. I'm also pleased to announce that the Robin Hood Foundation will be granting the Office of Student Affairs $300,000 for emergency student funding. While there still continues to be significant need by our students, this is a good start. Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez will work with the foundation and our most impacted colleges on details and allocation. All of you have visited cuny.edu and view the Hurricane Sandy resource page, which provides links to information about counseling and temporary housing, and frequently asked questions, documents, as well as other helpful resources. In the wake of the storm, we established a CUNY community Hurricane Sandy Relief Council. I've asked Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez and Vice Chancellor Ginger Waters to represent and representatives from every campus and the university Student Senate and the University Faculty Senate to come together to work on such a relief council. The council met on Monday, November 12th, along with representatives from the mayor's office and the Red Cross, and quickly began working to coordinate and enhance fundraising and relief efforts already underway. I gave the charge to that council, and I'm delighted by the response thus far. Student, faculty, and staff volunteerism was at an all-time high, with many members of the CUNY community participating. One example, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board that needs special recognition is that of Mary Beth Melendez, a student at the College of Staten Island. She left her home to help cook food for needy Staten Islanders in the immediate aftermath of the storm and was interviewed by Anderson Cooper of CNN, which many of you may have seen. Like many CUNY students, she has continued to volunteer and help distribute Thanksgiving Day turkeys, all the time being disabled by not being able to see. She is an extraordinary member of the CUNY community, and we're truly blessed to have someone like Mary Beth Melendez amongst us. Going forward, I intend to establish a new volunteer initiative called CUNY Helps. In the short run, this stands for Helping Ease Losses Post-Sandy, and in the long run, higher education links to programs and services. CUNY Helps will be a student service corps that will mobilize CUNY students and faculty to work on projects that improve the short and long-term civic, economic, and environmental sustainability of New York City and of its residents and communities. While the program draws inspiration from such longstanding federal programs as the Peace Corps and AmeriCorps, it seeks to make use of some of the unique assets of CUNY and its crucial place within the life of New York City. The goals of CUNY Helps are threefold. First, students will gain valuable real-life experience, earn a wage, and where appropriate, in some cases, even receive college credit. Faculty members, through their work with students in the program, will have additional opportunities to apply their expertise to addressing many of the city's key challenges. And lastly, residents, communities, and project sponsors, such as community organizations and government agencies, will realize concrete benefits resulting from CUNY Helps projects. As this initiative unfolds, obviously, the Board will be more informed of what we hope to do, working with the University Faculty Senate and the University Student Senate will get moving on this very quickly. The Office of University Relations developed and launched a new website called CUNY Faculty and Staff Experts, Protecting, Rebuilding, and Planning for the Future. This lists more than 130 experts available at our CUNY camp- This lists more than 130 experts available at the, at our CUNY campuses and professional schools to assist decision-makers as long-term solutions are developed related to recovery and disaster prevention and management. It features expertise in such areas as storm surge prediction and protection, satellite remote sensing of Earth's climate systems, watershed hydrology, New York City environmental public health, emergency management, public transportation infrastructure. In fact, members of the board, we have at the table today an internationally known field geologist in our own president, Bill Fritz, who just prior to Hurricane Sandy, developed a model showing how New York's geography will amplify a storm surge in the event of a large storm, spelling trouble for low-lying areas. Bill has suggested a multi-step approach to preventing similar catastrophes in the future. Congratulations, Bill, and thank you for that very important work. The mayor's office has asked CUNY to manage a climate resilience study. This project will engage numerous CUNY subject matter experts and eternal, external consultants, such as the Rand Corporation's team that produced the study for New York, New Orleans on storm surge, flood risks, and policies. There are many important efforts underway in what will be a multi-year program, inextricably connected to our city, state, and, and the challenges that we all have ahead. I would like to take just a moment to acknowledge a few people who went out of their way with long, sleepless days and nights to work in this community to try to make life as comfortable as we could for so many of the people in this city that was so ravaged by this very, very difficult storm. First of all, let me acknowledge Executive Vice Chancellor Allen Dobrin. I asked Allen, as our chief operating officer, right at the time when we knew this storm was going to be a very bad storm, to get to work and mobilize an effort to communicate with all of our campuses and work collectively because we knew we would be needing shelter. I never envisaged, members of the board, that Allen would take the reins as forcefully and as intelligently and as sensitively as he did managing with our presidents, our vice presidents across the university to keep the university vibrant and functioning during a very, very difficult time. And Allen, I think we all owe you a debt of great gratitude for the very- Vice Chancellor Iris Weinsholl, who probably knows every room and every nook and cranny of the university, worked with all of our presidents to ensure that as things were developing, that moves were done appropriately, that places were shored up appropriately. And Iris, your work was, was deeply appreciated and really helped us through this mine of very challenging problems. Our executive vice chancellor, Alexander Logue, I knew that we were going to have trouble with the university closed for several days and some of our campuses out of commission for further days, that we would have to redo and reimagine how we would maintain our covenant with the State Education Department to provide the number of hours needed for a, a class to be certified and she did extraordinary work with all of our presidents and our academic vice presidents across the university, working with our students, our University Faculty Senate, and I appreciate the work that you did as well. And certainly Vice Chancellors Frank Sanchez and Ginger Waters for working on the relief drive. All of you really did such great work. Jay Hirschenson and Mike Arena for the extraordinary work that they did in setting up a communication network that informed and received information and got the necessary directives out to people who needed them. Brian Cohen, our chief information officer, kept our systems alive, CUNY alerts and, and all of the things that needed to be done. So many people, Public Safety Director Bill Barry, our Ron Spalter, who's our deputy chief operating officer, Bert Sax, Bob Tatchick, so many people need accommodation for, recognition for the work that they did and if I forget a few names, I really apologize, the list is quite long. I'm going to skip over the New York City Regional Economic Development Council, I chair that. The governor is going to be coming down within a week or so to chat with me and members of the council on the recommendations that we have given as our priority projects and we look forward to that engagement. I'm also representing the university on the new New York Education Reform Commission, spending a lot of time with Dick Parsons, with members of the commission who are doing very good work, Sandy Weil, Stan Druckenmiller, other people who are trying to think through many of the challenges and I'm pleased to say that we have finished iteration one of our first report that will be delivered to the governor and hopefully some of our recommendations that deal with how do we train teachers appropriately, how do we evaluate people appropriately, how do we embed technologies in ways that we haven't before, a whole panoply of recommendations that the governor will consider in his State of the State address. I'll skip over the budget because we will be talking about that in just a minute. Many of you know that I reported that the state legislature mandated that both CUNY and SUNY file a report on remediation. I'm pleased to tell you that we got it done very quickly. It's up in Albany, SUNY is still working on theirs and I want to thank Lexel Logue in particular for coordinating that event as we move forward. We are talking with the division of the budget about a possible CUNY 2020 plan to help with capital needs and we are also having some private discussion internally about some innovations in the way in which we might be able to proceed without state support but by using resources and other collateral that we might be able to, to implement projects that we are now preventing from implementing. I'm very gratified to report to you that the Office of Civil Rights of the U.S. Department of Education just issued a determination, this is a big deal, dismissing the complaints concerning CUNY's Black Initiative, Black Male Initiative filed six and a half years ago by the New York City Civil Rights Coalition. The determination finds that in all regards, the current BMI program is legally compliant. Although long overdue, this is a great result for the CUNY BMI and the many students that it's served and continues to serve. This determination enables BMI to seek grant funding from the U.S. DOE and others. I want to thank the board, first of all, for your strong support of this initiative, which I brought to you knowing that it might be somewhat controversial but the right thing to do. And you've been steadfast in your support and I want to thank all of you for that effort. I want to also thank, and I'm going to ask them to say a couple of words in just a moment, our great general counsel, Rick Schaefer, and his assistant general counsel, Jane Sovereign, and associate general counsel, Heather Parlier, and BMI director Elliot Dawes for their outstanding work on this matter. So let me turn it over to Rick and then I'd like to hear from Jane Sovereign. Rick, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just want to establish the setting and I'm going to let Jane tell you about the investigation, but of course you remember about years ago, I think it was, the chancellor appointed a task force, some of the presidents and trustees were on it, to look at issues relating to demography in higher education and in particular, the relative scarcity of, of black men. The report of the task force was informative and of course it included recommendations, some of which pertain to CUNY itself. Those recommendations were then implemented and as they were being implemented during the, I guess towards the end of the first year, we were faced with this complaint filed with the Office of Civil Rights, which promptly began an investigation and I'll let Jane pick up the story at that point.
Well, there, the, the investigation, which started in, in 2006 in response to these, these complaints, the complaints were essentially that the BMI programs were discriminatory on the basis of race and sex, that they were exclusive to black men and discriminatory for that reason. And the investigation was lengthy, exhaustive, the BMI directors at the campuses were tireless in the documentation they provided, the interviews that they gave to OCR, worked very, very hard. We, in the office of general counsel, worked closely with the campus directors, with Debbie Douglas and Elliot Dawes, who were the central folks coordinating the BMI. We all worked closely to make sure that every program, while it was geared to help black men and others typically underrepresented, that every program was inclusive, that anyone who wanted to participate could do so and to make sure that all of the materials that were generated by the BMI programs included that information, that all were welcome, while nonetheless, the programs were geared to help in, in particular, certain populations. After way too long of an investigation, we worked with OCR to negotiate a resolution and this is back still in, in the Bush presidency. So this is even before the first time that President Obama was elected, but we negotiated a resolution agreement and I, I have to commend the chancellor and others because OCR was insisting that we give up the name Black Male Initiative, that the name itself was discriminatory. And we hung tough and said, no, we won't. They wanted us to, to give up the name, to agree to five years of monitoring. We hung in there and OCR eventually agreed, you can keep the name and you're going to have a short period of monitoring. We were ready to sign the agreement and then the election happened, silence for many years. And in, finally in 2011, OCR issued new guidance relating to voluntary use of race in higher education. And the guidance that OCR issued read as if they were describing our BMI program. So we had spent all these years with BMI being unable to apply for federal or federally-funded grants because they were under this cloud and yet here was OCR sort of saying that the right way to proceed was exactly the way we were proceeding. So, General Counsel Rick Schaefer called the Assistant Secretary to say, in light of this, let's talk. And we started talking and we were prepared to agree to the, the resolution agreement that we had already negotiated when OCR began to signal to us that perhaps there needn't be an agreement after all. So of course, as lawyers do, when you never, when, when the regulator says, I'm on your side, you never say, wait a minute, you know? So we, we stayed quiet and then provided them with additional information and received on the Friday after Thanksgiving, was a very grateful Thanksgiving for many of us, the, the letter, the determination, finding, dismissing the complaints and essentially vindicating the, the approach of the BMI. And I really have to echo the commendation of Elliot Dawes and Debbie Douglas and the BMI campus directors for the incredibly vibrant and, and tremendous work that they're doing on the campuses and that they didn't let this deter them from all that terrific work that they did. So a good, a good Thanksgiving present for, for CUNY.
I, I'd just like to add in closing, a word about Jane Sovereign. The presidents around this table, almost all of you have worked with Jane, I'm sure. For the trustees, Jane may be less familiar, but Jane has been at CUNY for approximately 20 years. She's been the deputy general counsel since I came 12 and a half years ago and the fantastic outcome in this investigation is really just typical of the extraordinarily talented and, and wise counsel that Jane gives to this university every day.
Mr. Chairman, I think it is important to report that the Hispanic Dominican community held a telethon in the CUNY on the Heights. We raised about $180,000 and we sent them several trucks full of all kind of merchandise. I personally like to thank Jay Hirschenson for his strong support to this initiative. I think it was a wonderful telethon theirs and now the community came all together there in support of the people of the horrible storm.
Thank you. Let me, a few more things, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Frank J. Macirola, that many of you know, is seriously ill and I've known Frank for a long time and I think it's important that we recognize Frank's work. And as a result, we are establishing a scholarship which will be designated for an outstanding undergraduate. I think it would be appropriate at Baruch College because Frank, and I've raised the money already for you, so you- Because Frank was an outstanding teacher at Baruch College and, and taught in the political science department. He also taught government and in, in public affairs. For those of you who don't know Frank, the scholarship recognizes him as an exemplar, a New York City exemplar and a great CUNY citizen. His extensive contributions to the city and state include highly regarded service as chancellor of the New York City Public School System, director of the New York State Emergency Financial Control Board for New York City, chair of the, of the 2003 New York City Charter Revision Commission, and I know how hard work that, that is, chair of the New York State Higher Education Services Commission, and chair of the New York City Districting Commission. He was also president and CEO of the New York City Partnership. A distinguished educator, Dr. Macirola also served as president of St. Francis College as well as dean and professor of law at the Benjamin Cardozo School of Law of Yeshiva University. University. To honor this model educator and public servant, the university will create a $100,000 endowment to last in perpetuity for a, an outstanding undergraduate. We are, already are contributing $25,000 for that gift, and we will develop the whole thing for you, so don't worry about raising any money. But let me just indicate that Frank, if you're listening tonight, and your family is listening tonight, our thoughts and prayers are with you, and I think all of us are very proud of what you have done for this city and for this university, and Godspeed. Let me conclude, Mr. Chairman, by announcing two events that are upon us. We are sponsoring a STEM conference with U.S. News and World Report entitled STEM in the City: Powering New York City's Future, organized in association with the New York Daily News. The event will take place on December 6th at John Jay College. I hope all of you will be able to be there. The Editor-in-Chief of U.S. News and World Report, Brian Kelly, will moderate a panel that I will be on with Dennis Walcott. This will be part of a multi-year initiative with U.S. News and World Report. I think I mentioned at our last board meeting that I started this in Dallas of this year, and we look forward to continuing in waking up many communities on the importance of, of STEM in this country. The 2013 CUNY Calendar Project will be unleashed on December 17th. There will be a reception at the New York Times, and this is prepared with the help of the Wagner Archives at LaGuardia Community College. The theme of the new calendar is inventing the future science, technology, engineering, and math. And on a somber note, I am sad to announce the passing of Donald Menzies, who worked at CUNY as an employee of the Research Foundation for 25 years, from 1984 through 2009, focusing on workforce development, economic development, and access to education and training for adult workers. He developed and oversaw and evaluated workforce development programs and created the Regional Economic Center for Economic Development, which in its last years managed the provision of vouchers for training programs on behalf of New York City government educate, agencies. Don was an intelligent and kind man, a good colleague, and deeply committed to CUNY and its mission. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments for the Chancellor on his report? Mr. Chancellor, I know I speak for everyone on the board when I thank you and your colleagues for your, for your response to Hurricane Sandy, not, not only in managing the huge impact on CUNY directly, but also helping CUNY contribute to the well-being of so many people in, in the region. So we thank you for everything you and your colleagues have done since the storm. We'll now turn to items that require a vote. I would like to move the adoption of the Chancellor's University Report. There is a copy of the report at the table. May I have a second, please?
Go ahead.
Are there questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? The report is adopted. Secondly, I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of September 24th, 2012. You have a copy of the draft minutes in your meeting book. Are there any revisions required for the minutes? If not, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The minutes are adopted. We'll turn now to our committee reports. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs Chairman Joe Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a report of the November 5th Joint Committee on Fiscal Affairs and the Subcommittee on Investment. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs and Subcommittee met in joint session on November 5th after approval of the amendments of the Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting of September 5th. Associate Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza made a presentation to the Committee on the Operating Budget Request for Fiscal Year 2013-2014. After Mr. Sapienza's presentation and subsequent deliberations, the Committee approved the operating request for FY 2013-14, and now I will ask Associate Vice Chancellor Sapienza to make the same presentation to this board. Matt?
Thank you, Trustee Loda, and good afternoon, everyone. All the trustees received our budget request narrative, and as Trustee Loda referred to, the, the resolution is in front of you. But the presentation I'm going to go, go through is also part of the packages that were distributed to you all this afternoon. That's this PowerPoint presentation labeled 1314 Operating Budget Request. So the first two slides of the presentation detail the CUNY compact, and I know you're all familiar with the compact, so I'm not going to spend too much time in these slides. But Fiscal 14 represents the eighth year that we're using the CUNY compact as our financing vehicle for the budget request. And if you turn to Slide 4, it'll give you a little history on the compact. For Fiscal 14, the eighth year that we've been using it. Fiscal 2007 was the first year. And since then, we have been able, through the compact, to add $251 million in programmatic initiatives at our campuses. And again, let me point out that these are programmatic initiatives. These aren't mandatory cost increases or funds that are used to plug a budget shortfall. These are all new investments that were made at the campuses since Fiscal 2007. $175 million at the senior colleges and $76 million at the community col, at the community college, at the community colleges. The biggest component of this $175 million is $60 million that has been invested in full-time faculty. Again, $41 million approximately at the senior colleges and 19 at the community colleges, and that equates to 880 new faculty lines being added to college budgets since fiscal year 2007. 556 seniors and 324 at the community colleges. So in putting together the, the compact investment plan and the budget, budget request for Fiscal 14, we already had a guidepost, and that was the master plan that the trustees approved at our June meeting. The master plan is required every five years, and so the 2012 through 2016 plan was approved by the board back in June. And the plan has four main missions, which are outlined beginning on Slide 5. Mission one is expanding academic excellence, and the principal components of this area are full-time faculty and the decade of science. Mission two is maintaining an integrated system and facilitating articulation, and these are the, at this category includes the initiatives that help students acclimate to college life. Our very successful ASAP program is included in this mission. On Slide 6, we have Mission 3, which is expanding access. These include all of those key student services initiatives, the Black Male Initiative, veteran services, and services for students with disabilities. And lastly, Mission 4, which is on Slide 7, remaining responsive to the urban setting. These focus on the university's role in contributing to the well-being of the state and the city, on things like workforce and economic development, sustainability efforts, teacher education, and the like. So we had the master plan categories, on which we were able to use, as I said, as a guidepost to put it together, request. We also did consultations with the University Student Senate, the University Faculty Senate, and the Council of Presidents Fiscal Committee, and that helped us put together the, the request for 2014. One of the main components that is being included in the request for 14 can, is related to financial aid, which is on Slide 8. As you'll all recall, in the current fiscal year we're in, the university set aside $5 million for the Student Financial Assistance Initiative, which helped students with providing additional work-study opportunities at the campuses, with the purchasing of textbooks for the students that were made available in the library for loan during the semester, and by providing direct tuition waivers to students. And so what we're proposing in the request for Fiscal 14 is to double the commitment to this program and to increase it from $5 million to $10 million. And one change that we are preparing to make for Fiscal 14 Student Financial Aid Initiative is to include a component for graduate student financial assistance as well as undergraduate. We include, in that last bullet point, some data about the amount of financial aid that has been given out in the 2011-2012 year, because this, as helpful as this $10 million Student Financial Assistance Initiative is going to be, it's just a very small portion of the financial aid opportunities that are available to our students. And so you can see $562 million was given out in last academic year for Pell Grants, $266 million in TAP awards over that same timeframe. And you should also take a look at the wonderful document that's part of your packages, the, the CUNY Value Document, that was put together by Senior Vice Chancellor Hersonson's office. It has some terrific data on not only financial aid, but comparative analyses on where CUNY is related to other public higher-ed institutions. Okay, so on Slide, Slide 9, we have the summary of our request, and our Fiscal 13 budget, the current year that we're in, totals $2.8 billion, and you see the three major funding sources that comprise that $2.8 billion, state aid, city support, and tuition. And so for the Fiscal 14 request, we're looking for an additional $115 million in mandatory needs and an appropriation increase of $93.5 million for programmatic initiatives that would bring our budget to slightly over $3 billion. And you can see the funding sources of those mandatory needs and program requests. So to provide a little more detail on, on the financing components of the compact for Fiscal 14, again, as we've done throughout the, the compact initiative since it was started, we're asking the state and city to pick up all of our mandatory needs and a component of our programmatic initiatives, which you can see there on Slide 10. We are also asking the state for an increase in the community college base aid rate, which is the third item there on Slide 10, an increase of $22.8 million. We're asking for an increase in the base aid of $260 per FTE. The current year rate is $2,272 per FTE. That represented a $150 increase as to where we were in the prior year. However, please keep in mind that going back to fiscal year 2009, community college base aid per FTE rate was $2,675 per FTE, so we've lost over $400 per FTE since fiscal year 2009 due to budget reductions at the state level. And so we're asking for this $260 increase to try to bring us closer to where we were in fiscal year 2009. The other thing I want to point out about this request is that SUNY is also including a $260 per FTE increase in their budget request for Fiscal 14. So we'll, our community colleges and the 30 community colleges at SUNY will all be asking for the same increase for next year, $260 per FTE. We have our additional tuition revenue for next year, which is projected to be about $70 million. And then we have our two self-financing components, restructuring, these are efficiencies that we're committed to funding within our own university budget, $7.5 million, and then an additional $10 million in private fundraising through philanthropy, for a total request of $226 million. So what is the, what is the programmatic initiatives going to cover? Well, that's outlined on Page 11. The majority of it, $67 million, is going to Mission 1 of the master plan, maintaining, expanding academic excellence. And again, the largest component, as it has been for every year in the compact, is for adding additional full-time faculty lines. And the Fiscal 14 request includes the addition of 425 additional full-time faculty. We've also set aside funding for the decade of science and for academic advising. In Mission 2, maintaining an integrated system and facilitating articulation, the largest component there is $7.9 million for the expansion of our very successful ASAP program, and $2.2 million to expand the new community college for its year two. The Mission 3, expanding access, we're asking for $10 million. $2.5 million is to enhance veteran services at all of our campuses, and we're also asking for $1.5 million to fully fund the CUNY Leeds Program. The CUNY Leeds Program, I think most of you are familiar with, it provides vocational and academic services to our students with disabilities. Lastly, remaining responsive to the urban setting, we're requesting about $16 million there, $2.5 million for workforce development, $3 million provides students with meaningful work experiences during their college careers at CUNY, and $3.8 million for facilities repairs at our campuses. So that outlines, at a very high level, what the programmatic initiatives will be used for in our 14 requests. Slide 12 breaks those out by category and by senior and community colleges, so you can see the total amounts there, and you can see our financial aid initiative is also included for an additional $5 million for next year. Mandatory needs at $115 million for a total request of $226 million. On Slide 13, is the summary of our mandatory needs. The hun, the largest component of the $115 million is, as it has been for the last several years, fringe benefits, almost $68 million. Most of that emanates from additional costs for health insurance and pension liabilities. We're also projecting that energy is going to increase by over $12 million at the university level, building rentals at 5.2, and then salary increments and inflation in our purchasing budget accounts for about $30 million. Last slide, and Slide 14, discuss next steps. You'll be voting on the, on the resolution this evening. Once it is approved by the, by the Board of Trustees, it'll be shared with the elected officials, and the timing is, is very critical because in January, the governor will be issuing his executive budget for Fiscal 14. Later in the month, the, the mayor will be presenting his preliminary budget for Fiscal 14, and so it's critical for us to make sure that the folks in Albany and City Hall are aware of what our needs are for the budget as they're putting together their plans. And just those last two bullets to give you a little frame of reference in terms of what the city and state's budget conditions are. The state, when they did their first quarter financial report back in the fall, was facing a deficit of a little under a billion dollars. The governor recently stated that this estimate might grow by another billion as a result of the hurricane. The city's also facing a budget gap for Fiscal 14. When the mayor presented his, and the mayor and the city council agreed and adopted budget for Fiscal 13, the projected gap for Fiscal 14 is $2.5 billion. So Chair Loda, that concludes my report. Happy to take any questions if, if any of the trustees might have some.
Are there questions for Mr. Sapienza? All right. Thank you very much for that report.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Fiscal Affairs unanimously passed the operating budget request for FY 2013-2014, and now I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3A.
I'll second the, the motion to approve the, the budget. Are there questions for the committee? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The budget request is, is adopted.
Trustee Loda, if I can, I just want to take this a moment to recognize all the staff in the University Budget Office and Deputy Budget Director Kathy Abada for all that tremendous work in putting the request together for Fiscal 14.
Thank you. Following the approval of the request, the Committee approved the following resolutions. Calendar Item 3B is a resolution to authorize General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the New York City College of Technology for Facilities Renovation Services. The contract shall be awarded pursuant to law and university regulations. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $450 million, excuse me, $450,000 per fiscal year. Sorry. The contract shall have a five-year term with, where I work, those numbers kind of... Such purchase shall not exceed the total estimated cost of $450,000 per fiscal year. The contract shall have a five-year term with the right for the university to terminate the contract at any time. The college will use this contract to obtain, to obtain facilities... The college will use this contract to obtain facilities, renovation services on an as-needed basis. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3B.
I'll second that motion. Are there questions on the item? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? 3B is adopted.
Thank you. Calendar item 3C is a resolution to authorize the general counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the university to purchase examination program management services from Cooperative Personnel Services pursuant to law and university regulations. Cooperative Personnel Services is an independent government agency that provides funding and human resource services to all levels of government and the public and nonprofit sectors. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $345,000 per fiscal year. The contract term shall be for five years with an option to renew for one additional year with the university having the right to terminate the contract at any time in its best interest. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3C.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the item? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Carries.
Calendar item 3D is a resolution to authorize the general counsel to execute a contract amendment with Hoffman &amp; Barron LLP on behalf of the university to purchase intellectual property legal services. This contract amendment shall extend the term of the agreement by one year through June 30, 2013, and increase the value of the contract by $180,000 from $420,000 to an estimated cost of $600,000. The university and the university's technology commercialization office will use these legal services and intellectual property law to manage and protect the university's intellectual property. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3D.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the item? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? 3D carries.
Okay. Following the approval of action items A, B, C, and D, the Subcommittee on Investment was convened. They approved their minutes of that prior meeting as well as received an investment update from Chief Investment Officer Janet Crown on the university's portfolio performance through September 30 of this year. The meeting was adjourned, went into executive session for the private real assets review and recommendations. After resuming the public meeting, the Subcommittee approved those recommendations. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. May I call on Trustee Wellington Chen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this November 5, 2012 meeting, the committee approved the following policy matters. Calendar number 4A, School of Professional Studies of the Graduate School and University Center, BS in Nursing. This online degree completion program for registered nurses will address several systemic issues related to nursing education. First is response to the call from relevant professional organizations for more baccalaureate educated nurses. Second, this program will increase the number of baccalaureate seats available to CUNY to our end, many of whom are graduates from CUNY's associate programs in nursing. Finally, the asynchronous online format will simplify the degree completion process for nurses, many of whom work rotating shifts and have family responsibilities. Calendar number 4B, Baruch College, MS in Financial Risk Management. Baruch College seeks to diversify its graduate business offerings by launching a highly quantitative program that will prepare graduates both to identify risks and to implement risk management programs in their firms. The program will prepare graduates to pass the professional certification test of the global, excuse me, of the Global Association of Risk Professionals, the leading professional financial risk management association. Calendar number 4C, the College of Staten Island Doctor of Nursing Practice. With this proposed doctoral program in nursing, the College of Staten Island's Department of Nursing seeks to meet the anticipated requirement by the accrediting organization, the American Association of College of Nursing, to make the doctor of nursing practice a requirement for entry to advanced practice nursing. The proposed DMP will be the second clinical or professional doctorate to be approved at CSI, the doctor in physical therapy having been approved by the board during the last academic year. The college is, is confident that in its own undergraduate program in the other, in the area will be natural fetus for the CSI DMP. Calendar number 4D, Queensboro Community College, York College, due joint AAS BS in Nursing. This is a proposed due program, due joint program, meaning the two institutions are involved and that a student will receive two degrees. The proposed program is part of CUNY-wide initiative to provide a seamless path for progression of IN nursing graduates, graduates through the upper division of a baccalaureate program, allowing the graduates to be recruited for more competitive positions or to pursue graduate-level credentials. Calendar number 4E, Borough Manhattan Community College, closing of the Cooperative Education Department. BMCC's Cooperative Education Department has been conducting an internship program. BMCC intends to maintain this internship program, but the faculty members from this department will be placed in academic departments according to their discipline. This change will allow the college to enhance the quality of students' internships. Calendar number 4F, Borough Manhattan Community College, AS in Geographic Information Science. Geographic Information Science, GIS, is a rapidly expanding field. The U.S. Department Labor estimate annual growth rate are almost 35%. The purpose of the proposed program is to prepare graduates to begin entry-level employment in private industries and governmental agencies, as well as to transfer to baccalaureate programs. An articulation agreement between the proposed program and the BA in Geography, a hunter, has been signed. Calendar number 4G, City College of New York Sophie Davis School of Biomedical Education, abolition of the Department of Cell Biology and Anatomy. Following the recommendation from a 2012 external review, the Sophie Davis School of Medicine is merging two small academic departments. This merger will more effectively utilize resources and improve instruction. The Department of Cell Biology and Anatomy is, is being closed and its faculty members transferred to Department of Microbiology and Immunology. Item number 4A, 4G, were approved by the committee and recommend the approval by the board.
Thank you. I'll second those, those motions, 4A through G. Are there questions for the committee on any of these items? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items carry.
Information items. Dr. Lowe reported on three items. First, she discussed the creation of Center for Community and Ethnic Media at the Graduate School of Journalism. The proposed center will provide research, training, and professional support for community and ethnic media outlets in the New York City metropolitan region. The center's activities will be supported by several major private donations. Second, Dr. Lowe updated the members of CAPRA on the effects of Hurricane Sandy on the campuses. Some colleges such as Graduate Center had minimal effects, while others such as BMCC and Queensboro had significant water damage. York College reopened later than other colleges because it housed a large number of evacuees, many with special medical needs. Each college developed its own plan for making up its missed class time using whatever methods make the most sense for that college. Lastly, Dr. Lowe gave an update on the progress made on the Pathway Initiative. More than 1,000 courses have been submitted for review to CUNY Common Core Course Review Committee. This is the university-wide committee consisting of approximately 120 faculty members that reviews all courses submitted by the undergraduate colleges to ensure they will meet the learning outcomes specified for the specific areas of CUNY's new special education Common Core. In addition, good progress is being made with identifying the first three to six courses leading to the 11 large transfer majors such as business, psychology, and nursing. This part of the Pathway Initiative will enable students to start one of these majors at any campus that offered that major and finish it at another campus without losing any credits in their major. In addition, the progress being made was setting up the software necessary to schedule the Pathway courses and to inform everyone about them. And lastly, as part of the communication effort requiring, regarding Pathways, CUNY has created a new Pathways website with helpful information for students, advisors, faculty, and other staff. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on Trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will now present the items that the Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered at its meeting on November 5, 2012, for the board's approval. Item 5A revises the university's policy on equal opportunity and nondiscrimination against, and against sexual harassment, which have been streamlined and combined into a single policy document to make a clearer and more concise statement of CUNY's deep commitment to nondiscrimination and equal opportunity and against sexual harassment. In addition, the CUNY policy against sexual harassment is being amended to revise the university's position on intimate consensual relationships between employees, including faculty members and students, as well as between supervisors and employees. There are two principal changes from the existing policy. First, the amended policy prohibits, not merely discourages, intimate relationships between a faculty member or other employee and a student for him, for whom he or she has professional responsibility. Second, the amended policy continues the policy that strongly discourages an employee from having an intimate relationship with a non-student employee whom he or she supervises and adds a requirement that the supervisor must disclose that relationship to his or her supervisor in order to avoid or mitigate conflicts of interest with respect to the supervision and evaluation of the employee. The committee believes that the revised section on consensual relationships will better protect students who are in an unequal power dynamic with faculty or employees who have professional responsibility for them. It should also reduce the possibility of conflicts of interest in cases of employee relationships with consensual relationships are still permitted, where consensual relationships are still permitted. Mr. Chair, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the revised policies? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. Item 5B is a naming opportunity at Queens College in recognition of a pledge of $260,000 from Robert and Jacqueline Willens. The college will name the Choral Room at the Aaron Copland School of Music in their honor. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed this matter and recommends its approval.
I'll second that motion. Are there questions about this naming? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just as I take a point of privilege, I just want to once again congratulate Rick Schaefer and others with the Blackmail Initiative lawsuit and really hope to, I put your name forward to the people who are in Texas supporting that legislation before the Supreme Court. So, my congratulations to you and to the chancellor for your continued support of that initiative. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. May I call on Trustee Jeffrey Weisfeld?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered five items at its meeting of September 5, 2012. These action items are listed in the board meeting as, calendar as items number 6A through 6C. One, the City University of New York 10-year capital budget request, 2013 through 14, 14 through fiscal year 2017-18 is to be incorporated into the university master plan fiscal year 2018 to 19 through fiscal year 2022-23 as required by New York Works legislation to approve a 10-year capital budget request for major bonded and minor repair funded projects authorized by the City University Construction Fund to address critical maintenance, infrastructure, and programmatic initiatives. This resolution will approve the 10-year capital budget request for major bonded and minor repair funded projects. In the fiscal year 2012 to 13, new legislation was approved creating New York Public Works. This organization was tasked with creating a uniform capital budget process for all entities receiving state funds. That process now includes an expanded 10-year plan. And I'd like to please ask Vice Chancellor Weinsholl to briefly speak about the capital budget request.
Thank you. In front of you, you have a one-page handout, and I just want to briefly go through that handout. The capital budget process in Albany, as was pointed out in the committee's report, has undergone a number of changes. Historically appropriated capital funds happen on a five-year cycle. Current, the current state fiscal year is 2012-2013, which is the last year of the current five-year plan. This year, the governor has created a new unit, New York Works. All state entities, which include both CUNY and SUNY, are now required to revise a 10-year capital budget request. The goal of New York Works is to propose a uniform investment plan aligned with the strategic plans identified by the Regional Economic Development Councils created by the governor last year. The handout in front of you lists CUNY's capital requests according to the New York Works categories at the top and by CUNY program components at the bottom. And the bottom presentation is the way we usually refer to our projects. So, the capital plan categories as stipulated by New York Works are as follows: state of good repair, capacity optimization, transformational initiatives. And the CUNY components are done by the categories of critical maintenance, programmatic expansion, adaptive reuse, and equipment and software. The totals on these charts are lower than CUNY's overall request in the budget resolution before you this evening. That's because the requests to the city are excluded because New York Works is only concerned with state funds. The five-year New York Works request for the university is 5.7 billion, and the entire 10-year New York Works request is 9.4 billion. The capital budget request in the resolution has been prioritized according to the Board of Trustees' approved goals. They are the state of good repair, completion of ongoing partially funded projects such as the academic building at New York City Tech and renovation of the Lawrence and Eris Field Building at Baruch College. The third category is continuation of funding for the chancellor's initiatives. Those initiatives are the decade of the science projects and upgrade in technology across the university, which really mostly applies to CUNY first. The five-year request covers the period of 2013-2014 through 2018-2019, and CUNY is requesting 6.4 billion, 5.1 billion for the senior colleges, 1.3 for community colleges. And the 10-year request covers 2013 to 2014 through 2022-23. In response to New York Works, CUNY is requesting 10.5 billion for the upcoming 10 years, 8.3 billion for the senior colleges, 2.2 for the community colleges. And lastly, we're also requesting 87 million in RESOA funding from the borough presidents and the city council.
We'll continue with the other two items, and we'll ask for a vote on all three. Next item, number two, Medgar Evers College Library Expansion to accept the design of the Bedford Library Building Expansion Project as prepared by Icon Fives Architects with a construction budget of 21.7 million. Medgar Evers will renovate approximately 42,000 gross square feet for the Charles Evans Innis Memorial Library and build a 2200, uh, 22,000...
2200.
Yeah, there's a...
2200.
Gross square foot welcome center adjacent to the library located in the Bedford Building. The upgraded library will provide the college with a state-of-the-art code-compliant facility. And the third item, City of New York, City University of New York, lease amendment at 230 West 41st Street on behalf of the central office to authorize the general counsel to execute a lease amendment for additional space at 230 West 41st Street to be used by the university's Office of Budget and Finance. The university leases space at 230 West 41st Street, a building owned by the Research Foundation of the City University. The university's... The university's Office of Budget and Finance, which has its offices in the building, is in need of additional space. The university and the Research Foundation have agreed to amend one of its existing leases to add approximately 4,615 square feet of space on the 11th floor. I hereby request your approval of all three of these calendar items.
I'll second those three items. Are there questions on any of the items for the committee? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Those three items are adopted.
And that concludes the report of the chair for the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management.
Thank you very much. That concludes the items that we needed to take up in our public session, which I now declare is adjourned. We will stay for a brief executive session, and we do not anticipate reconvening the public session. What is that?